Sometimes.
Yep, gotta do it. You gotta do it.
Sometimes you just gotta.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna have a board meeting tonight and we're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance by Dr. Esquortina.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That may be the thing is to do it before, well, nobody's watching.
Before roll call?
Yeah.
Before roll call, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. General function. Call to order, please. Roll call, Kelly.
I was waiting for him. Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Budzinski?
Here.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Stamborski?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
All right, we got the roll. We've got the appointment Secretary Pro Tem, which we already have that. And welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. And we've done the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, we kinda did that in reverse order. 1.05, public comments.
There are no public comments, Mr. Chairman.
No public comments, thank you. 1.06, model standards. 1.1, moment of silence.
We're gonna read, we're ready to read the model of standards.
Model standards, okay.
Michelle will start.
Model standards of good practice for trustee boards. One, derives its authority from the community and that it must always act as an advocate on behalf of the entire community. Two, clearly defines and articulates its role.
Three, is responsible for creating and maintaining a spirit of true cooperation and a mutual leadership, no, mutual supportive relationship, sorry, mutual supportive relationship with its CEO and cabinet members by trusting in the leadership of its ability and encouraging the administration to share their success, challenges, and major concerns. Four, strives to differentiate between external and internal processes in the exercise of its authority.
Engage in a regular and ongoing process of in-service training and continuous improvement, comma, including building relationships with each other, parentheses, board retreats, board dinners, et cetera, as well as attending other college functions on and off campus. Six, expects its members, expects its members come to each meeting prepared and ready to debate issues fully and openly.
Number seven, expects its members will vote their conscience and support the decision or policy. Number eight, must exemplify ethical behavior and conduct that is above reproach as individuals and as a collective.
Number nine, remains always accountable to the community. Number 10, honestly debates the issues affecting its community and speaks with one voice once a decision or policy is made.
11, puts the interest of the interests of the college before all others. 12, promotes the mission and supports the strategic vision of the college within legal limits and refrains from sharing confidential college business.
13, exercises diligence competence and objectivity in executing the positions to which trustees were elected. 14, devotes full attention to presentations shared with the board and to one's duty as a trustee, setting aside competing personal or professional interests and promoting student learning and student success. 15, supports a positive working relationship with other trustees and the president on and off campus. Trustees must address concerns with other trustees equitably and respectfully and understand the difference between policy development and administrative operational decisions.
16, directs employee complaints and/or requests directly to the president and community complaints and/or requests to the president and the chair of the board. 17, refrains from using the position as trustee to influence students and/or community members, to negate any perceptions of conflict of interest.
Thank you all, and thank you, Dr. Klein, for supporting this.
Now, it's 1.1, moment of silence.
Chairman O'Connell, trustees of the board and members of the JJC community joining us today, please, I'm asking for you to join us in a moment of silence for Joe Healy, the father of Deborah Gaskin, professor in the Health and Public Services Department, and Wilma Adams, mother of Terry Adams, adjunct professor in the Fine Arts Department.
Can I add one, please?
We have one more to add.
Bill Lorch, he's the spouse of former faculty Betty Lorch.
And for Michael Langliss, brother of our assistant controller, Daryl Langliss.
All right, we're ready. 1.2, selective reports. 1.2.1. Board of Trustees' Approval of Disability Employment Awareness Month proclamation.
Yep. Chairman O'Connell, it's my pleasure to introduce our student. His name is Jan Opit. This is Jan's third year at JJC. Jan is working toward his associate's degree for orthotics and prosthetics technology. Jan's goal is to get their bachelor's degree in robotics. Jan enjoys 3D printing in his spare time and also has a passion for aviation. Jan's a volunteer at the Gift from the Heart Foundation, where he helps his dad transport kids and families who come here from Poland to receive life-changing surgery. Jan?
(inaudible) employment awareness month. Whereas in 1990, the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, was signed into law, ADA was, is a, is a civil rights legislation that works to increase the inclusion of people with disabilities in all aspects of community life, including employment. And whereas National Disability Employment Awareness Month is a nationwide campaign celebrating the skills and talents workers with disabilities bring to our workplaces, and whereas the month of October is designated to reflect the important role of diversity plays in the workplace, and whereas Joliet Junior College advocates respect and inclusion for every individual by demonstrating courtesy and civility in every endeavor, and whereas Joliet Junior College pleads to promote and recognize the diverse strengths of its employees and students, and to value and celebrate the unique attributes, characteristics, and perspectives in every individual, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grande, Kell, LaSalle, Kinkakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaims the month of October as Disability Employment Awareness Month. In Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 14th day of September 2022.
So moved.
Do we have a, Kelly?
I think we need all in favor.
We're gonna do all in favor, yeah. Okay. We have a motion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 1.2.2, recognition of retiree Jesse Cambrik. Jesse here? We have Jesse here? No. Sorry, Jesse. We'll, you're here in spirit. 1.2.3, recognition of retiree Annette Hova. Annette's gonna be here in spirit also. Okay. 1.2.4, faculty union report, Dr. Bob. I just got my workout in for the week. As always, thank you for the opportunity to address board. I don't have a lot this evening. I do wanna say before I say anything about, say something about Annette Hova. Annette's been working in academic affairs for a long time, and I actually taught Annette's daughter, Kristen, several years ago. And a brief story about Kristen. Kristen had no experience at all in journalism, and this is, I attribute this to her mom. No experience at all. Once, one spring, I said, hey, I need an editor for the student newspaper. Would you do it? She said, I've never done it before. I said, ah, you can do it. So she did it. She did a really nice job the year she did it, and she loved it so much that the next year she went into nursing. So, but, but Annette is a really, just a wonderful lady and has been great to me over the years, and she's walked me through so many things that I've needed walking through that, and she's not only done it for me, she's done it for a lot of other people. The other quick thing is, this, it's great to be back on, I mean, I've been on campus for the last year or so, but it's great to see more and more students back on campus and walking up and down the halls and seeing them interacting and just, it's alive, it's alive again, and that's just a great thing to see. And then if you're around yesterday, today, or tomorrow, there's our, our club organizations are all, have tables out today and tomorrow called Main Street, and it was packed today. I mean, I wasn't there the whole time, but when I came in, there were students all over the place trying to join new organizations and get involved, and it's just so nice to see them here because as an instructor, you're wondering, geez, a lot of these kids haven't been in a classroom in a while. How are they gonna respond to a classroom? And personally, I've found that they're responding very well in the sense that they're really enjoying the face-to-face interaction. So maybe, obviously there are gonna be issues going forward because some students haven't had that opportunity in a while, but I really, I feel good about it. I think a lot of us do. I also think that during this, this year, I think we're gonna learn a lot about the future of community college education and the best ways to serve the students. And I know that for Dr. Namuwa, this is at the top of mind for him, and we as faculty want to make sure that we're on board doing what we can to make sure that we are serving our students in the way that best meets their needs. So I, and I think we're on, well on the way to do that. So that said, I will cut my remarks short, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob. All right. Ms. Laurel.
We're, we're working on this problem. We're working on this problem.
There's a solution coming.
There's a solution coming.
Thank you.
I should know better than to sit over in the corner over there. Good evening, everyone, and nice to see all of us back here again. I also don't have a lot to report. I do want to acknowledge Jesse Cambrik, the adjunct who's retiring. She has spent 10 or 12 years, a fair number of years here, I'm not sure exactly how many, in the English department, and I want to acknowledge her service and wish her well in retirement. Other than that, you know, we're getting ready already for spring semester assignments and moving along the scheduling process. I understand there's been some, some work done in improving that process, which will benefit everyone. It will benefit our students. It will benefit all of us and make things hopefully smoother and better for going forward. Other than that, this semester, I think, is going pretty well so far, and it's, it is, I agree, very nice to be back on campus and see the Main Street this afternoon and talk to all the different student groups and get to know some of them a little bit better. So with that, I will also abbreviate what I have to say, and thank you for the opportunity, and see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 1.3, minutes approval of a minutes for a regular meeting, August 10th, 22, 2022. Do I have a motion? And?
In a second.
So we're not gonna, we're just gonna say, approved or not approved? Oh, we are approved? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Okay, okay. Then the motion carries, because everybody eyed. Communications, Dr. Rogers, Ms. Rogers. We'll make you a doctor, yeah.
Okay, for tonight. There are no communications.
Thank you. 1.5, approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Everybody say aye.
All in favor, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? None. Motion carries. 1.6, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Nope, we'll roll call on consent.
Yeah, we gotta do a roll call on that.
I do have discussion.
I mean, no. We know. Approval of the consent agenda, it's been approved.
There's a motion in second.
All right.
There was some discussion by trustee Broderick.
Right.
Okay. Just because, I'm not pulling any items, I just wanna thank the fact that I did ask Dr. Namuwa about the bidding on the, and vans, us having vans instead of us renting it. I think the concise information that he provided us made sense to definitely still rent since the cost of the vehicles are really not something that we want to engage in. I also looked at the renewal of the Cisco SmartNet renewal, and we're doing that now. Isn't that where you said twice, we're doing, we're getting more services, and it's not much of an increase. So I did, and I'm just telling you guys so that you understand what I had pulled. And then I did look at the Delta Control. I saw that was minor increases, so I was okay. But when you get to the Treasurers Report, I did ask Dr. Namuwa to look at bank choices because it seems like we have a very narrow idea of who we're putting our funds with, and I think that should be explored. I'm not pulling anything, I'm just making comments, and Dr. Namuwa's aware of it, but I thought all of you should be aware of it too. But that concludes my discussion.
Any further discussion? All right.
Need a roll call. Vote, Mr. Chair.
We'll have that roll call.
Okay. Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Budzinski?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborski?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes. All right. So we've got to that point, one, or 6.1. First meeting, first reading, board policies, 6.1.1.
All right, so I'm gonna briefly go through the policies, just so we're all aware of what will be passed next week. Mandatory training ensures all employees are aware of the requirements and responsibilities regarding mandatory training. 6.1.2, consensual romantic or sexual relationship establishes expectations to limit, to mitigate risks and to reduce liability for relationships between employees and faculty and students. Workers' compensation states that the college complies with the employees and, with the Illinois Compensation Act and establishes those terms. The college regulations establish regulations for college property. Parking and motor vehicle codes states that JJC adopts the State of Illinois Vehicle Code, Chapter 625 ILCS 511-100, as well as the governing of traffic movement and establishes parking and vehicle code enforcement policy. Medical cannabis, the purpose is to clarify the restrictions on the possession and use of medical cannabis on JJC property. In case anybody's wondering, you're not allowed. Conceal and carry firearms is, the purpose is to clarify restrictions on the carrying of firearms on college property. I am going to invite Chief Brandon to come up. We would like to add a provision to this, and he is going to explain that, so I just wanna make sure it's okay with all of you if we're in agreement that this still will go through to be passed next month. So if you...
So I had an opportunity to speak with Attorney Buck, and we would like to add a provision, whereas individuals that can lawfully carry firearms would still be required to register with the police department, just so that we're aware of who they are from a tactical standpoint and a safety standpoint, so.
That amendment will be made, so when you see it next time for approval, you know, it'll have that provision in there. It doesn't right now, but we talked about it after the fact, and it's the right thing to do.
Well, that's good because I did ask about, I had a concern with the conceal and being it in your car, and I thought, my understanding is from a protective mode, they have to be locked in some type of a box in the car?
It does say that in the policy.
So that's, so that was my concern. If that be the case, they could go back. So I'm glad you're registering it because that was a concern I had.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
And the last one is prohibited use of tobacco products, which just explains that we prohibit the use of smoking and smokeless products on college campus.
So if they go outside to vape, they can get in trouble outside of the campus?
Technically, chief could decide to go and tell them, yeah, you're not supposed to be vaping. They can do it in their car, but you, if it is not JJC property, but if it is JJC property, then you have to, but for the cannabis, that's not even supposed to be in your car. For the students, if there's anybody who uses medical marijuana or anything like that, that is not allowed on campus at all, not even in your vehicle. So leave that at home.
Not even brownies?
No, not even brownies. Can't bring brownies to school.
Just out of curiosity too, though, okay, since marijuana is legal, is there a way of identifying if somebody comes on campus and is, we know how to identify if they're drunk. Do we know how to know, identify if they're drunk with cannabis?
Cannabis stays in your system for over 30 days, so especially if it's medical marijuana, I really don't know that there's much that we can do with that, with it being legalized. And as it is mainly used for anxiety purposes, I don't think that if they have a medical prescription for it, I don't think that it's our place to tell them what they can and cannot do.
But what if it's not medical, since it's legal to have in the state of Illinois?
Then I suppose...
From an employment perspective, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
From an employment perspective, it isn't that you have it in your system, it's whether or not you're under the influence. So if, from an employment perspective, the supervisor had reasonable and articulable suspicion that the person was under the influence, then we could take them for a blood draw. And if it was over a certain limit, then they'd be subject to dispenary procedures.
It would be a blood draw.
Correct, it's a blood draw.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be the indicator. Thank you.
Good times.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, down to 6.2, second reading, board policies. Consent, approval?
So those all went through?
So we're all, all the way down to reports now. Seven.
I'll start. Okay. Chairman O'Connell, thank you so much, trustees of the board and members of the JJC community who are also virtually as well. I'm gonna echo, start my remarks by echoing Bob and Laurel's comments. Boy, it's exciting to be on campus. This feels like three years ago, right? It's certainly, there's a ton of energy on campus. I have the opportunity to eat at the cafeteria every other day, and it's just full of energy and excitement. And if you walked down the hall today and stopped at Cindy's booth or stopped at Alicia's booth, it was, it was just, it was like you could feel the energy flowing among us. So it's a fantastic thing, and just wanted to take the time to thank all of our faculty and staff and many of our leaders who showed up today. But I just wanna acknowledge all of our faculty and staff, all of our employees and our leaders who made all of that energy possible, right? Bringing students back to campus, filling our classrooms, filling our hallways, you know, that, that doesn't just happen, right? It's because of all of our employees who make this possible. We are a people-driven enterprise. So I just wanted to give a huge shout out to all of our employees for welcoming students back and then welcoming themselves back as well, as here we are, face-to-face and in person. Many of you know, I've hit the ground running here. Actually, I walk around campus, I hit the ground walking a lot. And I've also tried to hit the ground listening as well. And as I've met with mayors and superintendents, leaders of industry, some of our student reps, and all of our employee groups, one thing is clear, that the JJC continues to be an amazing place, and the future of JJC is, is very bright. And if we collaboratively craft that vision for what we might be and what we might achieve, I've got a lot of optimism in me. I wanna offer some highlights, just really a few, and I've provided a written report to the trustees, just a few pages, and allow me to highlight one that's actually not found on this report, and this one was very recent. I wanna give a special shout out to a longtime community partner, actually, one of the first people to reach out to me after I got this job, Brian McDaniel. If that name sounds familiar, Brian's with the executive director of the American Red Cross. And he contacted us earlier this week and asked for some help. The Red Cross asked for some help for the migrants making their way from Texas to Arizona, and the help was, we need translators. So working with Dr. Farmer and Kelly Roder Tannelli and some of our other leaders, Cindy as well was involved, I believe, we put a call out to the college community, and I believe over 30 students and employees raised their hand to demonstrate and show interest in volunteering to help migrants, help the Red Cross rather, with translation services. So I just wanna start with that acknowledgement, and again, it's not in your packet, but definitely deserves a shout out to a longtime partner, the American Red Cross here. Boy, I'm tired of hearing how great our culinary program is. So here's what I did. I made reservations for tomorrow night, so I can see for myself, as many of you know, and you'll most likely hear from some of the trustees this evening, culinary, student-run culinary establishments are open for business, and I encourage all of you to check it out. My family and I will be there at Thrive tomorrow night to partake in everything the JJC culinary program has to offer. I wanna highlight our partnership with the Greater Joliet Area YMCA and Northern Illinois University. Go Huskies? Is that it? Huskies? Okay, all right. I'm learning. I'm learning.
You'll get it.
They're hosting together, we're hosting a health science-based learning workshop on September 29th from 6:00 to 7:30 here on campus in the U Building. Next thing I'd like to highlight, and it seems as though every other meeting includes some reference to our newly branded Entrepreneur Business Center. They've been extremely active, connecting with the community. They've been extremely active connecting with the community, organizations like the City Center Partnership in downtown and various other organizations. So just kind of wanted to give them a shout out. Gary Reichert and his staff are really doing a fantastic job under Dr. Santiago's leadership to get out there, connect and to be really a hub for small businesses, not only in downtown Joliet, but in all of our surrounding communities. For those who are unaware, the JJC Fitness Center, as part of a college-wide wellness initiative, is free to students and employees this semester. This is a celebration of our employees, our students, and a wellness initiative and then really just a way to celebrate coming back to campus as well. Few more. Laura Sprague Art Gallery Exhibition, a year of Mondays. I had a chance to walk through the art gallery. It's fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to do so, please do so. Our guest artist is Christopher Wood and that will conclude on October 19th. In the fine arts area, there'll be a recital by JJC music students on September 28th at noon in the theater. Additionally, fine arts professor Tammy Perkins will be directing The Odd Couple on October 6th and 6th through 9th. And lastly, in the fine arts area, auditions for the upcoming production of The Wolves will be held September 19th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. and September 20th from 6:00 to 8:00. And you can contact Assistant Professor Brian Fruits for more information. In regards to bringing students back and all of us back to campus, JJC food service in the first three weeks of the semester served, brace yourselves, 8,471 customers, which is up 182% over last year during the same time. Yeah. We all know what last fall looked like. Nonetheless, you know, huge kudos to our food service. I mean, they do a really great job feeding all of us, myself included. Couple more, the Employee Wellness Program, Walking Wolves, kicked off September 6th and many of us in this room participated. It's been a fantastic thing. The first group got about 30 people this morning. I see Chief Campbell looking at me right now because he was out there. Many of us were out there enjoying the beautiful weather, about 30 employees. Again, part of a wellness initiative that aligns with, we're people before we're employees, right? We're mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers. We got to pay attention to our health and be well during these, these times. President's Academy for Leadership Cohort Five started on September 8th, so more to come on that. And I think you're in for a treat tonight. A nudge from the trustees inspired us to, to give a presentation on grants here at JJC. It's really one of our thriving enterprises, if you will. It falls under institutional advancement. So without further ado, I think I'm going to invite Kristi Mulvey up to the podium to kind of tee it up.
Good evening, all of you. As you know, last month, one of the trustees asked if we could have a grant report. I started the grants department under the leadership of Dr. Gina Prue and we've had great success in the grants area, so I'm proud to introduce you for my report, the Director of Grant Development, Compliance and Performance, Yvette Johnson. Take it away, Yvette.
Good evening, everyone. Kristi, thank you for that introduction. On behalf of the Grant Ops team, thank you for inviting us to, to give an update on grants. As Kristi said, I'm Yvette Johnson and I've been leading this team for a little over six years. Kate Coghlan, who is, oh, can you see our presentation? I don't see our presentation.
Not yet, Yvette, but they're.
Oh, okay. There's our presentation.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go to our next slide, Amber. As I was saying, Kate Coghlan, who is our grant developer, was not able to join us this evening, but she's been my partner in crime for the past six years. But we are joined by Amber Maldonado. Amber, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Hello, looks like I was muted. Sorry about that. So my name is Amber Maldonado. I am the Grants Administrative Assistant and I've been assisting this amazing team for nearly a year now.
So as you can see from this slide, we are the single point of contact for many things related to grants. We work with faculty, staff and financial services to create and submit grant applications and then assist with post-award management. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So we apply for different types of grants, including federal, state and foundation. JJC grants are primarily government, I would say over 90%. State grants are generally from ICCB, while federal grants are primarily from the Department of Education. Foundation grants can be from private foundations, community or corporate foundation and require a nonprofit status. So we apply through the JJC Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). Okay, next slide. So this bar graph shows the grant dollars that we projected next to dollars that were awarded and these represent competitive grants. As you can see, except for FY '17, our team has exceeded the projection in each of these fiscal years. Some of you may recall that back in FY '17, we were still dealing with a State of Illinois budget impasse when there was no state budget. And during that time, Illinois Higher Education funding was slashed across the board and like, you know, many other schools, the college experienced some delayed funding. The bump that you see in FY '21 reflects a $1 million workforce equity grant. The numbers on the bottom of the grant, again, indicate dollars over projection, except for FY '17. And again, these are competitive grants, so for FY '22 and '23, these numbers do not include some appropriations that we received in each of those years. Next slide. Excuse me. In FY '22, JJC received an appropriation of 1.4 million, a little over 1.4 million from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for build out of the Vet Tech and Respiratory Therapy Program spaces. And then in FY '23, the college received 1.5 million in appropriations from ICCB, really as a result of some federal stimulus money and some fairly recent Illinois legislation. These funds were for early childhood programming, healthcare, workforce pathways and a college bridge program for first-generation students. So when we combine those appropriations with the competitive grants for each of those years, we are over $8 million in both fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Okay, next slide. So set aside funding is that. The 2023 federal appropriations process is allowing Congress to directly fund projects in the form of congressionally-directed spending in the Senate and it's being called Community Project Funding in the House. We submitted some applications and JJC's Entrepreneurial Development Center was selected by both Senator Tammy Duckworth and Representative Lauren Underwood for funding, but the project will only be funded by one of them. We asked for over $300,000 if you're interested. And something to keep in mind, Senate Appropriations will work with House Appropriations to reconcile all member requests after Congress passes a spending bill for this funding. We want to, you know, also keep in mind that the federal fiscal year starts October 1st, so this funding may not even come through until calendar year 2023. Okay, next slide. This slide provides a snapshot of the number of individuals who benefited by grant dollars in FY '22. We picked some of the larger programs, so you can see over 1,300 unduplicated in adult education, over 900 in workforce development, and then two Department of Ed Trio programs, Student Support Services and Educational Talent Search, served over 700. So total, this is over 3,000 individuals served by grant funds in these three programs. Next. So we know that Dr. Farmer has given a couple of presentations on becoming an HSI, but we wanted to quickly touch base on this again, as we've been getting some questions on it. I would say a key point to remember is that an institution only has the Department of Education HSI designation if the institution has Title V funding. In order to be eligible to apply for Title V funding, the criteria on this slide must be met. So JJC meets criteria number one with the requisite percent of Hispanic students, but not the other criteria. We are under the student threshold and over the threshold for educational expenses. So every year, colleges and universities submit information to IPEDS. And if you're not familiar with that, that's the acronym for Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System. From the IPEDS data, the Department of Education creates an eligibility matrix, which is a list of all potentially eligible post-secondary institutions for Title V and III funding. The IPEDS data used will always be two years prior to the current year. So here's an example. Let's go to the next slide. FY '21 data would be used to determine FY '23 eligibility to apply. So within that eligibility matrix are thresholds that need to be met. If the numbers are either over or under the median or average threshold, then the criteria is not met. So just so that you, for, you know, point of reference, in FY '21, the needy student enrollment eligibility threshold for two-year public institutions was at 34%. JJC was 21%, so that's under the threshold. And then the eligibility threshold for educational and general expenditures for two-year public colleges was over 14,000. We were above that, over 19,000, so we were over the threshold. So I'm bringing all this up to say that even though JJC is not eligible to apply for Title V funding and we would only have the DOE designation of being a Hispanic-serving institution if we have a Title V grant, we're not precluded from focusing projects and programs and resources on Hispanic students. If you just have a burning desire to take a deeper dive, to really get into the information in the matrix, let's go to the next slide. Here's a link for the Department of Education. We can send this to you, you know, if you, if you really want to take a look at it and get some more detailed information. It's a, it's a convoluted document, but we're happy to walk you through it if you'd like. Hey, let's go to the next slide. And so here, we just wanted to inform you of some resources that our team uses to assist grant managers. Grantopia, which we like, we think is a warm and fuzzy name, is a Microsoft Teams site where grant managers can find articles, mini trainings and share best practices. It was, this was the brainchild of Kate, our grant developer, and it was created in response to many questions that were coming up regarding workday. So we host monthly open hours where, in addition to people who manage grants, attendees include our partners from HR, financial services and procurement, and they can answer questions about workday procedures. And, and we've also found that, you know, just with grant managers, they're sharing information, they may have an issue and they help solve somebody else's issue. Also, when we, when people are new to managing grants, we have a short orientation to review very pertinent information in their grant agreements, such as reporting dates and grant deliverables. And at that time, we also share what we have is a grant guide, which is really a reference tool that contains some grant processes and some grant compliance rules, such as the Uniform Guidance, which is AKA CFR 200. Those are the grant rules, the federal grant rules. Okay, next. That's it. So we tried to keep this brief. Tried to keep this brief. We know that we could have gone into way more in depth, but we tried to keep it at 10 minutes. We hope that this high-level overview of grants was informative for you and we also would like to note that we provide a monthly update of current grant awards in the board packet. So again, thank you for inviting us and I hope that that was informative for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Yvette. So to remind you, every month you get in the packet exactly what we were doing, a monthly report as far as what we're getting in grants, what's pending and what we're working on. So that is my team. Kate would have been here, but her mother-in-law passed away yesterday, so we give her, her condolences because she was excited to be on here so you could meet her. But I have a fabulous team and if you have any questions, they're always open. At this point, if you want to ask some quick questions or to contact them, yes.
I do have a question. When you brought up the funding for 2023, as suddenly moving into 2023, we do have an election. How is that going to affect both, you know, when I see that Underwood and Duckworth are going to be there as supporting, what happens if they aren't? What, what's the recourse that we have? And I'm just saying, what if? Do we have any recourse if anything happens?
You know what? They're elected officials, so I don't know what our recourse is. We would like to make an assumption that they're both there and otherwise, I really don't know, Trustee Roger.
They be here virtually?
Would the.
My thought on that would be, you know, even if they are not the representatives sitting there, the legislation has already been passed and the money has been appropriated to projects.
I would hope.
So we're, and they have agreed to work with us. So I would assume that the person coming in would still honor that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that there's communication that leads up to it, that shows that we are, you know, working for that so that there is support, as you say, you know? I'm just asking because, you know, when you say it's going to 2023 and there could be a change of hands, you never know, especially with the election coming up.
Yeah, yeah, we know. We don't know that.
We got it.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
7.2, Representative for the JJC Foundation. And, right. And, and thank you again. 7.3, Representative of the ICCTA.
Thank you. All right. We had our meeting down in Springfield this past Friday and Saturday. Dr. Namuwa and I were both there. He was with the President's Council and I was with the ICCTA group. And I got to share what transpired. We had a great roundtable and as I asked you guys before, start thinking about questions for the roundtable. We had 11 questions. Out of the 11 questions, and I'll be glad to have, give this to Kelly so you can see what questions were, we had three that we were able to talk about, but we are always looking for more so that the group, and we vote on it, the group votes on it. We had over 40 delegates there. I mean, delegates means even you guys can come, anybody can come and interject information, interject what's going on, listen to what the other schools are doing. It's really informative. And the, I'm going to give you some background onto the questions. Question one was, what are ways the trustees can market their college? Well, the first thing was definitely more outreach is needed by all of us. By informing and outreach subcommittee, some have an outreach subcommittee, they attend high school board meetings, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, city council meetings, they're getting an outside audience's attention and that's what we need, is to get an outside audience attention. Have the Board of Trustees and bring back the questions to the entire board so that there's feedback from the outreach committee. Talk with high school counselors, get involved with chambers, get on their websites. We got to be on their websites. Get involved in local, regional and state committees. Be well-equipped with college current information to be a true ambassador for our college. Know your local legislators, meet with other school boards, have town hall meetings, which we've discussed, have calendar events, which, thank you so much for Carly providing us with these calendars. It's great. Marketing material, where's Kelly, Roder Tannelli? There you are. You know, like you used to give us, the Spanish and the English. Everybody's looking to be able, as we as trustees. Everybody's looking to be able, as we as trustees, to use them as passouts so people know what we're about. So another throwback to you. Develop social media for each of us as trustees, and the school marketing cards, as we said, in English and Spanish. So that was key for that question, and there's still more. Sponsor breakfast with all high school counselors in the fall and then in January. Strategic planning. We should have the community involved in our strategic planning because they can give us issues that they see that we should be doing to develop. Open houses at the school every six months is what some are doing. Talk with the right people. Know the right people to connect with. Have a trustee comment area on your agenda, which I think we need to add because the old and new business is gone, and this would give us the ability to make comments, like, I know, I have a couple of comments that I'd like to add because, you know, you went to the, you're going to the dinner. I went to the luncheon yesterday at the, at the Savar, and it was phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. They had over 80 dinners and twen-, or lunches, and 20 of them were takeouts, carryouts. Food was phenomenal. All right. Then they had, have activities to get potential students on your campus, so come up with some creative activities to get the kids out here. Even if it's a beanbag toss or, you know, something that gets people on the campus. You know, have a academic night or something where the, they can do a trivia night or something. Those were things that were thrown out. Game rooms were thrown out, too. Do things for visit, for the vets. Revisit your marketing and the dollars spent to marketing to see what you have to do. Then the next question, and this was a long one. Only Central College recently experimented with expanding tuition waivers by offering unlimited tuition waivers during a two-year period in the areas of welding, automotive, collision repair, music, art, and a few other areas. Overall, college enrollments grew from 1,050 to just over 1,800 in a little over five years, which was recorded as a 71% increase by the ICCB. The main growth was credited to the tuition waivers that brought in more secondary school graduates. So we are going to, since all of us were excited and interested in that question, not knowing enough about it, in November, which is on our calendars, you can put November 11th and 12th. Location will be determined yet. We're going to bring somebody for the college talk from Only College. So we're looking forward to seeing what they're doing and how they've done it because they, they've done this since 1990. So there's got to be ways of what they're doing, and our program director, when we brought this question up, he says, "Got it, I'm on it." So that was question number two, that basically we're getting a presentation. Number three was, what efforts are your colleges undertaking to increase enrollment, partly given this projected sharp decline of high school graduates? Okay, the concerns for the decrease are high school enrollment shrinking, need to really know the needs of your area's industry, need to ramp up marketing to get the public aware of what each school has to offer, need to get high school students on campus, change in the classes, need to be shown to the students and shown what unit of class is really, what it really is about. One of the schools talked about, we say what's on our, on our curriculum guide, but they have a trailer now that they have with everything that's in it that shows, and it's Carl Sandberg, that has everything in it to show what we have to offer so that people can come in. And we can go to the high schools with the trailer and have the kids come in when it's College Day. And that would be terrific for them to see onsite, to see what it has. So I throw that idea right to Dr. Namuwa. Invest in more sports teams, which we definitely have been doing. Extend times for admission and support staff to meet with potential students. So even though we may have some set from eight to four, maybe some from noon to eight is what they suggested. I'm just throwing that out there. Focus on making the students interested in your school. Know your college programs. I talked about the trailer already. Work with your alumni. Your alumnis are critical, like we have the TVs and everything. They liked what we were doing with the TVs to showing our alumni so the students would see what they could branch into for their, their courses. One suggested to improve our visibility is to rent, have rental space in each of the high schools. So like for the schools that have four of the schools, like I'll say, I know Lockport has two, Lincoln Way has three. They said to get an office so the students know where they can come, and basically have your brochures and everything that they can pull out, stuff on the foundation for scholarship information, and it's readily accessible. And we might get lucky not to get charged, but at least to have a space in the high school so that we can promote what we have to offer. And then another is to work with the local businesses and what training do you need for their employees? And the nice thing was that I handed Dr. Namuwa was, and bear with me, the stackable credentials, pathways to credentials that I gave him so we know how to approach and to get it interwoven into our, you know, from our community and that. And he's got a big pack like this. And not done yet. Just to give you some stats of what came out of our, our focus meeting, 44% enrollment decline has occurred since 2008. The world has definitely made a huge change, and especially with COVID. So pathways have to be started earlier. That's why the pathway book is there for us to start working more so on it. Regional economic, we, regional economic regions needs to be defined for new programs. Partnerships needed. And I think Dr. Namuwa knows about the partnerships because he had those in Arizona, if I'm not mistaken. Count everyone to determine our, count everyone to determine our value. We need to know what the value is that we have here at JJC. Go to people who need us, like Goodwill, high school. Check your census tract to need, to know what the jobs, what your needs are for the jobs, for more company-based type of things. Change our morality, boot camp style. Boot camp means bring them in, show them what it's about, you know, get down to their level. Wrap around the services needed, which are hotspots, transportation, childcare, which foundation definitely helped us with the last past two years. So these, I think, are needed things that they talked about and are definitely needed for us to look at for enrollment purposes. And bear with me again. In one of our executive meetings, we had a film that shows that if we don't take definitive action to define our enrollment and know our enrollment, it could all go to us sitting at home and no one having in the future jobs because it's all going to be robotically done. So could I please have that video started? Because it put all of us in shock when we saw this video. It left us with a very concerned message that we need to focus on what our children and our grandchildren are going to have. You didn't see any people doing any jobs. Trucks were driven by the robots. Things were done all by robotic things. That scared all of us because what are we in the, in the, in our positions here for? We're here to make education so that those, our children and our grandchildren and our students here can exceed and excel to have jobs. That scared all of us watching that video because we have to focus and make sure we have the right courses to gear so that people still have courses, and there's a need for us to have us out there in the workforce, not sitting at home going, what are we here for? So thank you for, for watching that. Some dates I want you to write down. November 11th and 12th is the ICCTA next meeting, and that's about the only, the only thing that they're going to be bringing, plus the roundtable. So in the interim, if you have any questions that you want brought to the, to the table, please shoot them to Kelly, so she'll shoot them to me. December 1st and 2nd, this is an ACCT Governance Leadership Institute, which is in Illinois and River Grove. All of us are eligible to go to it. It's a leadership conference, and it's highly recommended. Last year it was in Hawaii, or that's what I understood was, it was out of state. This one's in-state, so it's something to look at and consider. The President's Meeting is also on November 11th. October 26th to the 29th. How many of you are going to the ACCT convention? Okay? Those of us that go, just remember that when we come back at the next meeting in November, we have to have a report of what you've seen and what you've done. That's protocol, and I think Kelly will make sure that it's in your notes to her, from her. And then February 5th through 8th is when Josh, myself, and Kelly and Dr. Namuwa will be going to DC for the National Legislative Summit. So we'll be catching up with all of our legislators, those that were newly elected, and we'll see who's out there. And like last year, we didn't go because they had it where, basically, they were doing all virtuals, so we felt it was not necessary for us to spend any money to travel out there since there was virtuals. So Kelly does a great job in getting our questions put together, and the trio of having a student trustee, a board member, the president, and Kelly, you know, lassoing us all together to be, you know, coordinating our questions with the legislators for, you know, for grant money, extending the PELs, looking at short-term certificates and everything. We're there to make sure that we are definitely telling our legislators what our needs are for the college, for the higher education level. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 7.4 is student trustee report. Josh.
All right. Hello, everyone. So this is the student trustee report of Wednesday, September the 14th of 2022. So as you all know, Welcome Week occurred, and it was a massive success. So we had goose chase with 45 participated students. We had the JJC greeters program where 35 students volunteered. The JJC eats table where 1,800 food items were distributed. The block party on which 408 students attended. The picnic in the grove, which 275 students attended. Wellness Day, which 225 students attended. And the movie under the stars event, which 43 students attended with additional friends and family. During Welcome Week, there was a student survey. This was done just across all the different events during Welcome Week, just to see what students thought. So one of the attendings at the picnic in the grove said that, "I thought that the event was a lot of fun and very student-oriented. Also, I liked how the different departments were present because it gave students a chance to learn about the new programs or opportunities they might not have known about." And one of the Wellness Day attendees said, "I do think so. The mental health is very important, and the Wellness Day activities reminded me of some of the things I can do to relax, appreciate, enjoy life, and myself. I was also very engaged as a new student, and many important lessons learned. Supportive and friendly environments are important to having good mental health." Here are some pictures from the Welcome Week of the fall of 2022. And then the Main Street event, which occurs today and tomorrow from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock, where you had lots of tables out. It was briefly discussed a little bit earlier. We have lots of tables out, and all the different clubs were there vying for attention for all the passing students. And there were a lot of passing students. So it was bustling, it was hustling, and there was lots of, there were lots of sign-up sheets that were filled up. So I was very excited to see that. And I will be at the next one tomorrow if you can recognize me. So we'll see what happens there. And then there's the popcorn pop-up. There will be a popcorn pop-up event held at city center from September 27th at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and another one occurring at the Romeo Vale Campus on September the 29th during the same time. The goal of the popcorn pop-up event is to facilitate a student survey for those particular campuses. And this is the best, this is to help best address their needs and wants in a more direct way. And I have a project in the works. This has been in the works for a couple of months now. I kept it on the down-low because that I wanted to make sure I got it right before I presented it to the Board of Trustees. Now, not the whole project is available today, but I wanted to give you a little bit of teaser before the October Board of Trustees meeting. Let's see. There we go. So a little preliminary information on the student trustee mental health survey. So the former student trustee last year, David Lozano, had a survey of sorts where he took a very broad net approach and surveyed about 200 students to see what the problems around campus were. And what he found was pretty incredible. Let's see. As you can see from that bar graph, mental health was by far the most important aspect, up there with financial and work schedules. So this was a massive issue to students at the time that this survey was taken. And I looked at that number and said to myself that that number needs to be looked at and further. We need more information. What does that number mean and entail? So I did a little bit of digging. So the survey itself is actually completed already. Over 400 students have been surveyed. At the wellness event during Welcome Week, I had iPads out, which students could walk up and anonymously fill out the survey. Data in, preliminary data is indicating a pressing need for increased administrative attention and resources to improve specific aspects of student mental health. The full analysis will report will be ready for the Board October, the October Board of Trustees meeting. So you all have that to look forward to. And that was my last slide. But yesterday, I went to the, let's see here, I'll pull up my notes real quick. I went to the ICCP Student Advisory Council meeting. And that was, that is a meeting where a bunch of students from across the, across the state that attend community colleges, all of their trustees are supposed to attend this meeting and basically converse, talk about what's going on in their campuses so everybody can get a better idea of what is, you know, just to get a feel of the room, what's going on in the state, what are the movements happening? From the data side, a lot of it very, very closely mirrored much of the information that was delivered to you during the, oh my goodness, the workshop meeting a couple of weeks ago. Very similar information. JJC's population distribution is very similar to that of the average of the state. So much of the information would be, is almost identical, which was kind of interesting to see. So particularly the increase in online education, large, there is, though, a large statewide push for more dual-credit courses with high schools, as this seems to be a very good way of getting high school students to move to the college level. There is also, again, a massive female enrollment. There's six, I think it's closer to 60% now of female students enrolling on, at the college campus. And probably the most interesting graph that we saw, I really wish I had information for you guys. The most interesting graph that I saw was that the level of, the number of students graduating remained consistent while the amount of students that were enrolling was going down, which was information I really want to dig into, and I want to see exactly where that comes from. I'm sure it's a multifaceted solution, and there's no good answer to it, but, or there's a couple of good answers to it, but I, I have a feeling it's going to be a little bit more complicated, but that's something just I want to put into your minds. And probably the most important part- And probably the most important part of the event, at least for me as a Student Trustee, was networking and talking to other Student Trustees because I have my experience here. I know what this board is like, but I don't know what the board in Kankakee is like. I don't know what the board in Danville is like and I don't know what the board in Chicago looks like. So, it was really interesting talking to all the other Student Trustees of what goes on during their board meetings and the problems that are occurring for them around campus. The big three things that really needed to be addressed were, mental health was the biggest one by far. Disability access, to make sure that students with disabilities had access to campus resources. And the last one was financial, of course. Money and grants that go towards students to help them pay financially for college. Probably the big one we're going to talk about is mostly is mental health. So, yeah, it was pretty great. Oh, and Trustee Broderick, you brought up during the ICCTA meeting that board games and games room, game, games rooms were suggested. And that seemed to be the common consensus when I was talking to other students, you know, pool tables and darts boards, that's what, that's what everybody wanted. So, I would absolutely love to do that. To get students to stay on campus even if there's no events or classes or clubs going on, just a reason to stick around and meet people. I think that's very important for the community.
We're going to install it right here.
And they did say that the, you know, the beanbag toss, so that was another thing.
We could set up a permanent spot for the beanbag.
Exactly. And they were talking about teams and contests and getting them more involved and excited.
No limit. I see why they can stomp on.
I thought bringing that up, since you brought it up, it was, it's a good idea. Yeah. And the ICCB meeting went actually a little too well, that I managed to get, I'm now the committee chair of the ICCB. So, oops. Meaning that the next, all things being equal and everything going as planned, the next meeting will be held here at JJC on November 9th. So, I will be looking forward to that. The email will come, it will come in, it'll probably come to Dr. Farmer in a week or two.
November 9?
Yes. That's the current meeting date, so it may or may not be subject to change.
Okay. Because we have ours going around here, it'll be up here local for the 10th and 11th.
All right. And I think that's about it. I don't think there's anything else that I have particularly to say. So, that will be all. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
And I want to, I want to commend you. I was at Wellness and I've got to say, Pat Van Dyne, I hope you're feeling better. And you guys did a phenomenal job for the whole wellness thing, the walking, because that was something that Yolanda told, Dr. Farmer told me to go do, which I did. But the food, I didn't even know the food was going to be there. You guys did excellent with the food. And just when I saw the survey thing with the pods set up to do the survey, I was like, this is cool. They were actually all going up to the survey to fill it out. So, great opportunity that you took to get those new students and the students that came to it. It was well-attended and it was very enjoyable, you know, being out there. I enjoyed watching how they were putting positive things up, what they were drawing, the walk. It was very beneficial. And was that the day they were doing the, the bubbles?
The big bubbles where they have the string and they go like this and you get this.
Yeah, the bubbles. I think our president, I think I saw pictures of him doing the bubbles, which I thought was very rewarding that we've got everybody involved.
I think I failed 99 times and they caught the one time I did it.
It worked. It worked, but phenomenal. I mean, what you do as trustees and getting everybody out there and doing, you know, I mean, working with everybody, it just was phenomenal. I thought, I never saw Wellness and I wanted to come and see what it was like and didn't know you guys were going to have food and you did a wonderful job.
Oh, and one, one tiny last thing. Dan, I'm going to need some tips and tricks for, for the chairman of the board position. I want to hear what your, what your processes, I want to see how you go about it. So, look forward to talking to me in the future.
All right.
All right. That would be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
All right. Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Jake and me. There was no active Buildings and Grounds related bids for this month. Couple of quick updates in construction right now. It looks like the elevators in J Building should be completed shortly. I know the one's completed, but the other final two should be completed within a couple of weeks, is what I was told, which would be nice to have that for our students going up and down instead of having to climb those stairs. Miscellaneous capital improvements was the HVAC project, which we approved already. That, as I probably know the best, everyone here, HVAC equipment is a lot of long delays on it. We're looking from lead times about six to 12 months on most equipment for, for major equipments that we're looking to make these repairs on. Move to the Cisco Lab and the cybersecurity to North Campus has been completed, I think. I think it's to the final punch list already, isn't it, Matt? I think so, so. The AHU replacement project, which is a CDV project, which is, this is stuff that's in design. We had the bid in order to replace some major equipment. I think it's like right around $4 million and JJC's commitment would be 1.4 million, so the state would pick up the balance of that tab, which would be a nice little repair. We're repairing the leak in storefronts in A Building, Phase 2. We went to the August Board of Trustees Meeting, I believe, we believe we're ordering and getting that stuff ready for installing. Couple upcoming ones that we're going to be voting on in the next couple of months is replace the B Building main power transformer. Construction docs are in progress for this right now. They're thinking anywhere from December to, I think March is on the dates of the list. Replace the G Building switchgear and construction docs again and remodel the G Building restrooms, which is also in construction docs as well. The City Center site work phase, it looks like we are just trying to align our schedule with the city of Joliet because in order to do this, we're going to have to shut down one lane of Chicago Street in order to get this done, in order to mark the various utilities in the streets. So, so that's going to be a little headache and as you guys know, this downtown Joliet traffic is not the easiest on, on anyone, so.
I would like to add that the highway will be shut down for the next eight weeks, so we might, sorry, there's literally so much traffic right now. That's probably not.
Diverted everywhere, so.
Yeah.
And for Workday, I think we actually have one full, full year cycle here and now we have, we have a couple, we have some updates going on with Workday. As you know, with software, everything tends to get updated, so there's going to be some changes. So, I believe they're going to be on campus this week, right? Is that right, Dr. Farmer? And they're going to be discussing the various changes and helping us, helping us learn the various new processes, right? Is that, is that correct?
Right. Correct. End-to-end testing. So, we are, AVAP and Workday are onsite, working closely with all of our stakeholders and the end-to-end testing is the testing of the lifecycle of a student from enrollment all the way through graduation.
Which would be very interesting to see that data because we have a full, complete year now, which would be nice to see, so. Other than that, I guess that concludes my presentation tonight, so thanks, everyone.
Jake, did you talk about cybersecurity?
Yeah, we, we said we just, we're.
I got a question. It's probably not, I don't know if it falls under you or not, but I was listening on the news about how cyber, they're starting to break into grade schools. And as they break into grade schools to get the students' information, they're talking about how the young students have social security numbers that they're breaking into, those that are stealing credit and that are getting access to these kids' social security numbers. They don't know anything's happening because they're not cyber-protected. And I'm just worried because they said their TikToks, their Instagrams, and everything tied to them is the same password. It just scares me. I'm hoping that we give a message out to our students and that we start making sure the high schools know and the high schools filter down to the grade schools, because when it was on the news, and they're right, the kids have their social security numbers when they come out of birth and you don't get notified. I mean, my, my credit is on lockdown so that nobody can get into it unless I'm notified, but these kids don't. And what if all of a sudden at 18, they're going to go for an application for something and they can't get credit? And I'm just looking at security, some type of cybersecurity. So, I'm just mentioning.
I totally agree with that. Unfortunately, I'm in charge of building the cybersecurity.
Okay, sorry. All right. Well, that's good to know. All right, well then, well, just pass on.
That'd be a great thing for IT department to, to look into a little bit more, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome. That concludes my report, so thanks.
Thanks for carrying us, Jake.
Oh, it happens.
7.6, Board Policy Committee Report.
We already gave one, pretty much.
Pretty much. I just would like to say thank you to Tracy Morris and Carl even. You guys have been doing a lot of work with the restructuring. I mean, it just, even, even if it's just changes in the, the actual look and how the document is laid out and putting everything into Workday, there is, there is a lot of hard work that goes into it all and they have been doing an amazing job, so thank you.
According to that video, I'm going to get replaced by robots.
I was gonna, you know what, can I actually?
Attorneys. I, I want one now, I want a backup. Can I say something about that? George Jetson, attorney at law.
I did see that and I was literally thinking to myself, like, I really hate when I cannot get a hold of a real person. If I'm even like calling Comcast, if, if anybody wants a robot as a lawyer, I don't know, like, I don't know who. No emotion, they're just, I don't know, all right.
If you drive down the express, you say, "Look, there's a self-driving car." I say, "No, that's an attorney."
It'll say attorney at law on the flashing license plate.
Where are we going in society?
On that note, 7.7, Finance Committee Report.
The Finance Committee has not met in the last month, however, the audit did start two weeks ago. They will have a preliminary report to give to the Finance Committee in October. It's in your board book on 3.4. We should see something as a board here in a meeting in November. And there's some early summary numbers, just for interest, interesting reading. You can see where we start, you know, jumpstart of the year at with the numbers and I won't say outlook because it's too early to tell what we're going to look like or trend of the year, but I'd encourage you to read those if you get an opportunity. Unless Jake has anything else, that's.
You summed it up. Perfect.
We're kind of just summarizing right now.
Well, if either of you can make the next meeting for the ICCTA, for the tuition waivers, because that is considered in the budget, just so you know. If they do, if they've done it, it would be a good, you know, opportunity for you to hear what they're presenting as well as Dr. Klein.
Okay, we cross that off. Trustees Spotlight. And this is something new.
Okay, so, I guess I get to go first.
So, this is an idea that I think Maureen came up with this, which it's, it's a nice idea. I know that board members, we got a chance to introduce ourselves to the presidential candidates when we were interviewing to hire a new president. So, they got, they had an opportunity to hear from each one of us, but what Trustee Broderick mentioned is that the, the college community really doesn't know much about the trustees because we come in, we win the election, we get sworn in and we get right to work. And all you know is our name. You really don't know anything about us. So, we thought it'd be a great idea if we did a trustee spotlight for the next couple of months. One of us will come up and introduce themselves. I suggested that since his marriage month is kicked off tomorrow, that I would like to start, either myself or Trustee Garcia. And she said, "No, you go first." So, so, yeah, this is something a little bit new, so I'm going to be brief because I know everybody wants to go home and I want to go home myself. So, my name is Alicia Morales. I am a native of Joliet, Illinois, but I was born in Mexico. And I'm going to try and be really brief, but I do have a lot to say. So, I'm, I'm going to speak fast, okay? Because as a bilingual, multilingual person, we speak really fast because we always have, we're doing double work all the time. I'm first generation, brought to this country. My father was given a visa to come and build America and work on the railroad. He took the crappy job nobody else wanted, Mexicans and Chinese built the railroads. He worked in the elements, in the cold winter, in the hot sun outside, putting all those ties down so they could lay the rail. And he retired from that. And this is a really tough month for me because this month will be one year that he passed away. And this is the dress I wore for his funeral because he was really proud of who he was and he really wanted to come and give his children a better life. So, he brought three of his kids here and then he got three more kids here. I'm one of five girls and one brother only. I'm the second and I'm the first in my family to go to college, finish an associate's degree here at Joliet Junior College in 2001, is when I earned my associate's degree during the college's 100th year anniversary. I graduated with a degree in marketing management and then I went on to the University of St. Francis. I was the first in my family to complete a Bachelor of Arts, I'm sorry, Bachelor of Science in organizational management. And then I finished my MBA with a concentration in human resource management. But along the way, right after high school, I graduated from Joliet Township High Schools, I attended both of them, so I'm a steelman and a tiger. So, right after high school, I did get married. I married who I thought was my high school sweetheart, but that marriage was short-lived. I had two sons who are now 31 and 32 and I was, I was a battered wife and I didn't see any end to the abuse. And then I lost my job working at Cigna because I got it right from the high school program and I went to work, worked there for 10 years. They moved to Bourbonay, I didn't want to take the severance package. So, I decided, you know, what am I going to do with my life? I have two small kids, I'm in a really bad relationship, unhealthy marriage, but, you know, you don't talk about that because my parents raised me Catholic and, you know, you're supposed to carry your cross. Watch, I'm not Catholic anymore, but anyhow. I'm also not married either to my ex-husband, but anyhow. So, I, I got divorced and I had to get therapy to understand that it was okay not to be in an abusive relationship. And in the process, I knew what I was going to do down the line, that I was going to leave him. So, I thought, what am I going to do? I'm a woman, I'm Hispanic, I'm going to be a single mom with two kids. What future do I have in this country? There's not a bright future for minority women to be unpublicated forever. That was not, I don't think that's what my dad wanted for me when he decided to come here. So, I thought I need to go back to school and re-career myself with some transferable skills. And I was so afraid to come to JJC, I was so intimidated by it, but I decided I came. And I was 27 years old when I put foot in this school. And I came to school at the worst time because it was during the daytime when all the 18-year-old students were here. I felt so out of place being in classes with a bunch of 18-year-olds and I was 27, but I did it anyway. And school wasn't easy for me because I had to go home and still take care of kids, do my homework and then deal with a husband that I didn't know what I was going to get each day. So, make a long story short, I did end up, you know, getting divorced. I went on and finished my undergraduate and as a single mom, I put myself through graduate school. But it was this place that changed my life. JJC gave me education, let me see what the possibilities were for myself. And then they offered me a job because from the, from the stress of abuse, I developed a medical condition. I was having seizures, so I couldn't drive. So, when I would come to school, I had no car, I would take the bus, I was on the bus route. And I remember in between classes, I had like a three-hour gap. So, I went into the transfer center at the time and it was, now it's Dr. Lasbette Kason. Back then, it was just Angie Kason. And I had to kill like two hours because I didn't want to take the bus home and come back for my night classes. So, I said, "Do you have anything that I could help you with?" And she's like, "Well, I have these students. Do you speak Spanish?" I said, "Yeah, I do." She said, "Can you call these students and let them know that, you know, that they need to come back, that they, their, their class schedule's ready, their books, whatever?" So, I said, "Sure." So, I started calling, just volunteering. And then she mentioned me to, who was Dr. Hardison at the time. I don't know if Yolanda remembers Dr. Hardison. So, anyhow, and JD Ross was the president back then. So, then I remember I walked into Financial Aid Office to ask questions about my FAFSA and the director, she looked at it and she said, "Oh, I've heard of your name before." She said, "Come here, I need to talk to you." And I thought, "I just have a question about FAFSA." And she said, "Well, we're hiring, we need somebody that's bilingual, you know, we'd like to offer you a job." And I said, "No, I don't want to work here, I just want to get my degree and move on with my life." And she said, "Please," and I said, "I don't know anything about financial aid, we'll train you." So, they did and I loved it. I loved counseling students, talking to them about what FAFSA was, how it worked. And then I became the advisor for Latinos Unidos because it was, it was dying out. It was a club that was dying out and I would go to Main Street, recruit students and we re-energized Latinos Unidos Club. I was the president and vice president of the organization and I would take students to Chicago, to the USHLI, it's USHLI, United States Hispanic Leadership Institute, where I was able to meet Dr. Juan Andrade, who's the founder. And they do a lot of civic engagement at that conference. And I got to get more involved in civic engagement and civic participation, hence why I started getting involved in running for office. hence why I started getting involved in running for office. So currently, I am the first Latina elected to America's first community college, and I'm very proud of that. I want to live my father's legacy out and continue to contribute to Joliet, because I came to Joliet when I was one year old. So this is the only city I know, this is my country. My, what I want to contribute is, I want to continue to contribute to support equity initiatives, diversity initiatives, inclusion. I currently work here, volunteer on the board, on the Policy Review Committee, on the Presidential Evaluation Committee. I will be joining the board for Will Grundy Medical Clinic next month. I've also served on the Spanish Community Center Board, I've volunteered with Big Brothers Big Sisters, I've been on the Joliet Region Chamber of Commerce Education Committee back in '06 through '09, I have been a member of the Latino Business Association, I volunteered with Wish Upon a Star Foundation for kids that have terminal illness and they need a final wish. Those are some of the ways that I've given back to the community. My father taught me to always give back, plant seeds, and I want to just continue to live out his legacy, because he had a tough life. My family was not perfect, but they did teach me to give back, and that's what I want to continue doing. I want to continue, I will always embrace who I am, I will embrace the way that I speak. One time when I worked for Cigna, I had to go to Springfield, because our client was the state of Illinois, and so we did insurance. And I remember sitting in a room, and we were changing the formulary drug policy and what we was gonna cover and what we weren't, because I was a consultant for Cigna at the time, before they relocated to Bourbon A, but I remember sitting in a room, I was very young, I think in my early twenties, and someone in Springfield said to me, "Can you repeat what you said?" And I said, "Sure." And she said, "I'm sorry, but your accent got in the way." And I thought, "I understand, my Chicago accent does that all the time." So, you know, I've been collateral damage, people have discriminated against me, and I pick up on those things, you know, they're what we call microaggressions. So we pick up on that, and we know, you know, it's there, and it just tells me that we have a lot of work to do, we have to learn to embrace one another, respect one another, embrace our differences, and we have more things in common than we have different from each other. But I'm gonna continue to embrace my culture. I tell people, I'm an American woman of Hispanic heritage, and I'm very proud of that. I have three grandkids now, I have a 10-year-old, a six-month-old, and a one-year-old, and I'm just very proud to continue to serve here and give back, and I'm gonna continue celebrating, you know, who I am and being a part of this college campus and getting to meet everybody here, so thank you all, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, so. Muchas gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're down to the Chair's Report, and so I'll just say briefly, always briefly, is that, you know, if you haven't noticed, you know, God saved the king. So, everybody should be aware of that if you're not already, and I can't imagine anybody here who hasn't heard about it already. The second thing is, we can't forget about Ukrainians, and think about, think about the, well, we'll talk about, we'll talk about, you know, the guy who cannot be named, Vladimir, what's his, what's his name? We're gonna talk, the guy who cannot, will not be named. You know, the worst guy since Hitler or Vlad the Impaler, right? So, and of course, you can't forget all the other, all the other places that are having stress, and who are being killed in other, in other places here in this world, and they should, we should all be, we should all know about those things, we should all remember that. And, so if you, so I don't know, if you think about who's having the, who's the most recent civil war besides, besides the one in Worth, who will not be named? Like, you say, who's the guy in, who is the guy in, you named Haile Selassie? Where would that name come from? You know, nobody's ringing any bells? No, it's too, it's been too long, it's been too long since that was going on, you know? Bob Marley, Haile Selassie? Anyway, I won't go into that. Anyway, so we won't have a, we won't have a, another report, any more reports tonight, because there's no closed session, right? There's no closed session, so when we leave here, you can all go home, you don't have to stay. And so, all we need is a motion and a second.
Motion to adjourn. We can do a voice vote.
Yeah, Kelly, you can tell me, go ahead.
You could say.
You can all say aye.
All in favor.
All in favor, yeah.
You're giving.
Meeting adjourned.
Yeah, give me the power. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.